Okay, thank you Chris. We will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Teresa, if you would let us know if we are in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, sir, we are.
Thank you. And if you would do the roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Whitmer?
Here.
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 Mr. Strecker?
Here.
Mr. McAllister?
Here.
Ms. Remke?
Here.
Mr. Molesky?
Here.
Mr. Gentiman?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you Teresa. And does staff have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Staff would like to move Item 5, the Presentation of the Crystal Awards, to the end of the agenda. Also, staff has withdrawn DRB 001199-2020, which is James Bistro, from the agenda because they did not submit their application to Shelter Cove ARB for review as required.
Okay, thank you Chris. And Board members, Teresa, if you have any changes to the agenda, who would state them as... Does the roll for your vote? Otherwise, vote yes or no.
Mr. Chairman, we need a motion to change that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Gentiman. If somebody would make the motion.
A motion to approve the changes to the agenda as just stated.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a motion by Mr. Gentiman, a second by Mr. Whitmer? And as I said before, if anybody has Teresa's vote call, if anybody has changed, state them as she calls you. Otherwise, vote yes or no.
Mr. Whitmer?
Yes.
Ms. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. Strecker?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Gentiman?
Thank you. Moving on to the minutes for the special meetings of May 27th and May 29th. Again, if somebody making motion to approve both of those?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve both meeting minutes from special meeting of May 27th, 2020, and special meeting of May 29th, 2020.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gentiman, a second by Mr. McAllister to approve as submitted. And again, Teresa would do the vote. And as Teresa calls you, if you have any changes to those minutes, if you would state them then. Otherwise, vote yes or no.
Mr. Whitmer?
Yes.
Ms. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. Strecker?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Gentiman?
Thank you. And moving on to citizen comments. Did we have any, Chris?
Mr. Chairman, public comments concerning agenda items were to be submitted electronically via the town's open town hall portal. The portal closed at noon yesterday. There were not any comments submitted. One person logged on to the comments, put in his name, but did not make a comment on any items. Citizens were provided the option to sign up for the public comment participation by phone during this meeting. The public comment period closed at noon yesterday. There were no requests from citizens to participate by phone.
Okay, thank you Chris. I believe we have no unfinished business. Let's moving on to new business and our first item on the modified agenda, Circle K. We're doing great.
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, Shay Farrar will be making the presentation for staff on Circle K, Lagoon Road, DRB 0012102020, as well as Goodwill, which is DRB 001196-2020.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. This is Shay Farrar, Landscape Associate with Community Development. For Circle K on Lagoon Road, the applicant is requesting changes to the building and signage color as part of a rebranding of the gas station located on that corner. Here you can see the Ariel Pope Avenue runs north to south, and Lagoon Road runs along the north side of the property here. This rebranding is consistent with the previous rebranding approved by the DRB for Circle K. However, this store is located within the Caligney area and was previously designed to match the green used throughout that development. For this reason, staff has recommended that the approved changes be limited to the pump and sign faces and not the building awnings, canopies, or the monument sign structure, which are all currently green, consistent with Caligney. The applicant has indicated that they will remove these items from the proposal prior to submitting for a sign permit from staff. Based on the application's submittal, staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Modifications are limited to the pump and sign face rebranding. Building and canopy color changes are not approved. Freestanding sign color is also not approved. The changeable copy be limited to eight inches in height, and the bollards and curving are painted to match the stucco on the building color if intended to be modified. And now I'll walk through the plan's submittal. Here we have what was proposed for the awning, but as noted, this will no longer be requested by the applicant. They will maintain the existing green on the building. Here we have the sign face along Lagoon Road, which you can see is obscured by the tree on the left of the photo. The sign that's proposed will match the size of the existing sign and will be sandblasted and will also be consistent with the colors previously approved for the other Circle K locations. Here we have what was proposed for the pumps. Again, they will maintain the green. And here we have the proposed pump rebranding that's consistent with the previously approved applications. And this would be the color set also previously approved. Are there any questions?
Looks like not. So is that it from staff for the presentation?
Yes, sir.
And if so, then is the applicant joining us? And if so, do you have anything to add?
Joey, are you present?
Yeah. I am.
This is Mr. Blackwell?
Good morning. Yeah, as Shay mentioned, we did go back and talk to Circle K, and they agreed to remove the painting of the building, the trim, and the canopy, and the bollards from their scope. And they will leave it as is, as the current green color that matches the Caligney Plaza colors.
Okay, thank you. So all we're really looking at is the pumps and the signage for the building itself then?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else before I move on to Board members for their comments or questions?
I'm all good.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with questions from our discussion with Mr. Whitmer.
Based on the green stain, as the client just said, I am fine as submitted.
Thank you. Ms. Foss?
I'm also fine with it as submitted.
Thank you. Mr. McAllister?
I am fine with what's submitted as well.
Ms. Remke?
Could we look at the monument sign again for just a minute, please? On the road? Okay, is that the only one? I thought there was another one.
This is the only monument sign.
Okay. All right, I'm fine then. I thought we saw one that was a little brighter orange. But I think this is within our color palette, so I'm fine with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Molesky?
Yes, I am fine as submitted. Thanks.
Thank you. And Mr. Gentiman?
Yeah, I'm fine with the submission plus the staff comments. Since I'm the one designated to make the motions, I just want to make sure everybody's fine with the staff comments as part of what everybody's just agreed to. And if anyone wants to change their motion, I would request we go back and ask everybody. I'm fine as submitted with staff recommendations included.
Thank you. And I would agree as well. So in lieu of making a whole second round with everybody else, if anybody disagrees with Mr. Gentiman's suggestion of agreeing with staff's recommendations, which I do as well, if anybody disagrees with that, you would state them now. Otherwise, I'd ask for a motion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion regarding Circle K, Lagoon Road, DRB 001210-2020. Motion for approval with the following conditions. One, modifications are limited to the pump and sign face rebranding. Building and canopy color changes are not approved and have been withdrawn by the applicant. Freestanding sign color is also not approved. Two, the changeable copy maximum height is eight inches. Number three, the bollards and curving are to match the stucco building color on the buildings and columns.
Ms. Gentiman, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gentiman, a second by Mr. McAllister to approve with following conditions. The modifications are limited to pump and sign rebranding. Building and canopy color changes are not approved. Freestanding sign color is also not approved. Number two, changeable copy maximum height is eight inches. Number three, bollards and curving are to match the stucco building color for buildings and columns. Any further discussion? If not, then you would do the roll call vote. Is Teresa's policy or...
Yes, sir. Mr. Whitmer?
Yes.
Ms. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. Strecker?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Gentiman?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, and thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Moving on to our next in the business sign for Goodwill.
Hi, Shay Farrar again, presenting DRB 001196-2020. Along with the renovations to the building for Goodwill located at 1016 William Hilton Parkway, the new tenant is proposing to update the signage on the site. And here you have the location of the site. To the north is Dunneigan's Alley, and south is William Hilton Parkway. We did have to make a correction to the packet. The applicant requested that the sign along Dunneigan's Alley be removed from the packet due to location issues. Unfortunately, the updated set of plans intended for the packet were not posted correctly, so staff has included those in this presentation as a staff correction. The application includes only the monument sign and the building facade sign, which both match. The main monument sign is located on William Hilton Parkway. The proposed sign panel would match the size of the existing panels with no changes being proposed for the monument structure. Different from the version that went out in the packet, the address has been relocated to the sign face so that it does not appear like an add-on, but is integrated into the sign design. The applicant also worked with staff on additional changes to the colors to specify colors that complement the building and to change from a light background with dark text to a dark background with light text. The applicant also complied with staff requests that the logo area be reduced in size and changed so that it is more muted in color rather than the standard black, white, blue logo of Goodwill. The building sign would not be visible from William Hilton Parkway. It is located on the rear of the building where the main entrance will be, and it is the same size as the previous sign and in the same location and would match the monument sign design. Should the location issues be resolved with the sign proposed along Dunneigan's Alley, it would also comply with the DRB approval. Staff recommends approval of this application with the following conditions. One, that the background texture be wood grain rather than a smooth finish. Two, that the border around the address be deleted, which you'll see in the next slide. That the planter be planted with Ophia Pogon or mondo grass, one gallon containers, 12 inches on center, or the equivalent to be approved by staff. That the monument sign on 278 be power washed, and that any other entrance or exit signs or other signs on the site be painted to match the monument sign. And now I'll go through the revised presentation. This is what is proposed for the monument sign. Sorry, I'm going back. These would be the panels that would replace the existing panels on the monument sign. So as you can see, the address has been relocated so that it's integrated into the design, and staff has requested that the border around that be removed. The colors that are proposed are Sherwin-Williams Iron Oar in the logo for the black, Sherwin-Williams Dress Blue for the blue, and Sherwin-Williams Floridaisel for the text. The background would be Sherwin-Williams Classic French Gray. The sign would be sandblasted, and staff is requesting a condition that the background be wood grain rather than smooth. Sorry, the scrolling is... This would be the existing sign. And this would be the sign as proposed. This is the signage that's proposed for the facade in the rear. It would match the same design as proposed for the sign on William Hilton Parkway. I apologize. Okay, here we go. That would be as proposed. And that completes staff's presentation.
Thank you. And is our applicant in attendance today?
Yes, Pat Rocker from Signaramas here.
Do you have anything to add to staff's presentation?
No, I think she covered... And we're in agreement with making the changes that staff has requested.
Okay, thank you. Now I will start with Board discussion with Ms. Foss.
To be clear, the colors that we saw on Friday are not what's being proposed?
No, those are the colors. That was revised prior to the packet.
I don't remember seeing the blackish color, but...
It's the iron ore. It really reads more as a gray.
That's okay, that's why. And the picture that's right on the screen right now, there's a... I think it says parking there?
Mm-hmm.
Is that going to be part of the package as well?
That would be included in the condition that those existing signs be painted to match the approval of the DRB.
And then can we suggest that the landscaping be fixed around any existing signs as well?
Yes.
Other than that, I think it looks nice, and I agree with your conditions that you set up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foss. Moving on to Mr. McAllister.
I'm in agreement with a lot of the staff comments as well. Glad to see the addressing got moved down under the sign. I thought it looked a little out of place being on top. I think the colors are fine. Ms. Foss made a good comment about landscaping around the existing sign. Think it'd be nice if we could just clean it up a little bit so that it's legible. But other than that, I'm good with what's been submitted.
Thank you. Ms. Remke?
I'm fine with the signage that we're being shown for the building and for the monument. I want to touch base again on what we see here that says parking. On William Hilton Parkway, there are also some signs that say entrance and exit and parking again. Those signs are like a cube or a box, and some of them are very, very dilapidated. Do you have any plans to replace or repair those, or are you just going to paint them?
At this time, the proposal was just to repaint them.
Okay. I think I would suggest that they have some repair also because they sorely need it.
Okay, I'll recommend that to her. I don't think it's a big deal, so it shouldn't be an issue to do that.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Remke. Moving on to Mr. Molesky.
Yeah, I mean, first, I agree with Ms. Foss's suggestion to clean up the landscaping. I think that would be good. I like how the signs look. My only comment would be is if someone's in a position where they're leaving this boutique and you're going to pull back out onto Dunneigan's Alley, with that big monument sign there to the left, I don't know if that poses any concern of blocking a person's sight vision, and I don't know if this is a good opportunity to maybe do something to correct that, you know? If you kind of follow what I'm saying, you know, just from a safety point of view, you know, trying to pull out there, you're looking to the left to see if any cars are coming, and there's a big monument sign there. Sure, perhaps it's been there for all these years, and maybe there hasn't been any close calls or accidents, but that would be my only comment if anybody put any thought into that.
We have... That's one of the reasons we decided to take that out of this package because we need to really agree on the proper location for it. That hasn't been determined as yet.
Okay, so all we're approving is just the aesthetics of the sign, but not necessarily...
The location.
The location of it.
Right.
Thank you for sharing that. Thanks.
Anything else, Mr. Molesky?
I'm sorry, no, I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gentiman?
Sorry, taking notes.
Could I please make one clarification?
Sure.
The sign on Dunneigan's Alley was removed from the packet due to those location issues. So at this time, what's before the DRB are the monument sign on 278 and the facade sign.
Thank you.
Okay. I am in agreement with all of staff's comments. I think they're all spot on. Excellent job. And the additional comments by Ms. Foss and Ms. Remke.
Thank you. Moving on to Mr. McAllister.
I think I've already commented.
I think you just got me, Dale.
I'm sorry. Moving on to Mr. Whitmer. I forgot to unmute myself.
I agree with staff comments, Mrs. Foss's comments, and Ms. Remke's, so I'm in agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Whitmer. And I agree as well. I have no further comments myself. With that, would somebody like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion regarding Goodwill, DRB-001196-2020. Excuse me for a second. So hold on, I lost my notes. Hold on. Motion for approval for the monument sign and facade sign with the following conditions. Number one, provide a wood grain texture rather than smooth finish on the background. Number two, delete the border around the address at the top of the sign. Number three, planter shall be planted with Ophia Pogon... Sorry, I butchered that. And mondo or mondo grass, one gallon containers, 12 inches on center, or the equivalent to be approved by staff. Power wash the Highway 278 monument sign structure. The entrance and exit signs, as well as the parking sign, shall be repaired as needed, patched and repaired as needed, and painted to match the monument signs. Would like to clean... Next condition, clean up the landscaping around those existing site signs so they are legible. And just as a note, the Dunneigan Alley sign was removed from this submittal, and it's not part of this submittal. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Gentiman. Do we have a second? I didn't hear a second. Who seconded? I'm sorry. Was that you, Mr. Whitmer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Gentiman, a second by Mr. Whitmer to approve with the following conditions. Number one, the background shall be a wood grain texture rather than a smooth finish. Number two, delete the border around the address. Number three, planter shall be planted with Ophie Pogon, Japonica, mondo grass or mondo grass, one gallon container, 12 inches on center, or equivalent to be approved by staff. The unchanged portions of the monument sign at 278 shall be power washed. And the entrance and exit signs and other site signs shall be repaired as needed and painted to match the monument sign. And just to note that the Dunneigan's Alley monument sign has been removed from this package in approval. Any further discussion?
I believe... Forgive me if you mention this, but the landscaping around the existing site signs is to be manicured or whatever.
Right. I missed noting that when in part of the other site signs of repairing those as needed and repainting and cleaning up the landscaping around them. So thank you. With that, and no further discussion, we'll ask for the roll call vote. Teresa, if you would increase the policy, either vote yes or no.
Yes.
Ms. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. Strecker?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Gentiman?
Yes.
Kathy Fox is making a motion. Like, wait, not he.
Thank you. The motion passed unanimously. None opposed. Moving on to new development final Cordillo tennis courts phase two and.
Ms.
Myself.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Before you recuse yourself, Ms. Foss, you were making a mo- you were waving your hand.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's, it's okay. I was mentioning somebody here.
Okay. That's fine. I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss something.
Thank you, Chris and Ms. Foss. Okay, so moving on to Cordillo Tennis Courts Phase Two, and again, I need to recuse myself from this project. Turn it over to our vice chairman, Mr. Gentman.
Thank you, Mr. Lame Duck Chairman. I had to, I had to get that in. Chris, would staff like to make a presentation for Cordillo Tennis Courts?
Yes, sir. DRB 001209 dash 2020. The town of Hilton Head Island. Hold on, I'm sorry. This mouse is a little squirrely. The town of Hilton Head Island recently resurfaced the tennis courts at Cordillo Courts Park. Phase two of this upgrade to the existing facilities is the construction of a restroom, shelter and storage building to facilitate the organized activities at this park. The applicant has revised the plans to accommodate the conditions of the DRB's conceptual approval, I believe at your last meeting, and staff recommends approval as submitted. What you see on your site right now is sort of a zoomed out view of the area. The site is located in red or is outlined in red. Of interest is the new park, I'm sorry, I'm moving my, the new park in this area on Pope, so it's not very far away from the site. You also note right across from the park is the new hotel building going up and St. Luke's is right here at the corner of Pope and Cordillo. Does everybody have an idea of where we are?
Yes.
Good. I'm sorry, just, there we go. Zooming in just a little closer, this is an earlier aerial and does not show the new tennis courts, but they're in the same location as the old. And the new building would be located in this area. Because, because of the impervious coverage of the site, some of the existing asphalt parking will be removed and new pervious pavers installed to balance the site. This is the new tennis courts. You can note the screen, the perimeter screen, which is brown. The chain link fence is also brown. There is the site of the new building. Those two cars you see in the back, the parking in that area would be replaced with pervious pavers. There, you're coming in to the site off of Cordillo Courts, so you can see the new fence and the new wind screens on the tennis courts. Again, the tennis courts. And here is the site plan. This is, you can see the disturbed area is outlined. Perimeter is right there. So you can see the asphalt and the parking that will be affected and the existing trees with their tree protection fence. This is the site plan. The, the building is only, it's one restroom, so it's a family restroom with a storage there and a shelter out in front. Again, the sidewalk and then the pervious parking area right here with a new handicap. Now, the handicap parking stall and the aisle or lane, handicap access aisle would be concrete or pervious, impervious, excuse me. Again, the utility plan. And. Details for the site. The header, this page is important because of the header curve that will separate the pavers from the asphalt and see in the, right there. And the planting, proposed planting plan for the site. This is the proposed lighting plan for the site. And the color board for the site. It's important to note that the, not only the architecture, but the color board is a direct, is a reflection of the materials and colors and architecture that was used at the park. The thought was the proximity of this to the park, it made sense to make that connection. And there's the balance of the color board. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Chris. I'm pretty sure I saw Barry on here somewhere. Does the applicant have anything to add to staff's narrative?
Thank you, Mr. Gentman. I have nothing further to add.
All right, thank you, Barry. So let's see here. In discussion order, let's go to Brian Whitmer first. Mr. Whitmer?
I am fine as submitted. It looks really good. I'm ready to go to the bathroom.
All right, we can wait. Oh, and I forgot to mention, Mr. McAllister, you are the designated motion maker for this, so if you need to take notes, I don't think you have to take too many. Ms. Foss?
I'm fine with it as submitted.
Mr. McAllister?
I think it looks good as well. Only question I have, I didn't really see any, unless I missed it, I didn't see any elevations of the structure in the submittal. I know we've seen it before at preliminary and I don't expect anything changed since it flew right through. But other than that, I don't, I don't have any comment. I just wasn't sure if I missed something or not in the submittal.
Chris or Barry, would you like to address that before I move on?
Well, nothing changed on the elevations and I'm not sure why it wasn't in the package, but it should have been, but it's the same as was presented as conceptual.
Okay, and Mr. McAllister, you'll be making a motion, but you may want to note that in your motion.
Okay.
And then it's up, oh, Ms. Remke.
I'm fine as submitted. Thank you.
Mr. Molesky?
Fine as submitted. Looks great and it'll really clean up that area a lot. Looking forward to it.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think everything looks great and I would recommend to Mr. McAllister to add that note that the elevations were reviewed at the prior meeting and the assumption is that those have not changed. So would anyone like to make a motion?
I guess I will make a motion. Move Mr. Chairman to approve the Cordillo Tennis Courts DRB 001209 dash 2020 with the following condition that the building elevations that were reviewed on preliminary, on the preliminary submittal are to be the same as what, it is the assumption that we are reviewing the same thing.
Okay.
I don't know if that's sufficient.
That, that sounds pretty good to me. So would, would anyone like to make a second?
A second.
That was Kathy, correct? So we have a motion by Mr. McAllister for approval as submitted with the assumption that the building elevations, which are not included in this review, have not changed since the preliminary approval. And we have a second by Ms. Foss. Are there any other comments before, or actually, give your yes or no vote as you are called by Ms. Teresa and we'll see where it goes. Ms. Teresa?
Thank you. Mr. Whitmer?
Yes.
Ms. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Gentman?
Yes. And motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
So I will go back to our short time in chairman here. Mr. Strecker, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. Next up, I guess, being Board Business for election of officers for July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. So would anyone like to make a motion to nominate a board member to serve as chairman for that term?
I'll nominate Michael Gentman.
We have a motion by Ms. Remke to nominate Mr. Gentman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a lot of seconds. I think Ms. Foss might have been first. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Who's the first second?
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional nominations for chairman? No, hearing none. Teresa, if you would call the roll.
Yes, sir.
Yes or no?
Mr. Whitmer?
Yes.
Ms. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. Strecker?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Gentman?
I was hoping somebody would vote against me. I, I guess, I guess I don't really vote for myself, but I will accept the nomination. Or you can have my yes vote if you need that.
You can abstain if you wish.
Okay, I'll abstain from voting, but I'll accept the nomination.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Thank you, everyone. Congratulations, Mr. Gentman. Vote was unanimous. May you chairman. Now, would somebody like to make a motion to nominate a vice chairman for the next year?
I, I would like to make a nomination for Ms. Foss as vice chair for next year.
I think we have a second. A motion by Mr. Gentman, a second by Mr. McAllister, I believe, for Ms. Foss for vice chair. Are there any additional nominations for vice chair? Hearing none. Teresa, if you would call the roll. Vote yes or no.
Mr. Chairman, I think Mike, Mr. Gentman had a very good point. You might want to make sure that Kathy wishes to serve in that capacity.
Thank you. Kathy, Ms. Foss, would, would you be willing to serve as vice chair?
I'm surprised after today's bumbling attempt to get on and join this conference that you nominated me, but I, I would accept the nomination.
Thank you, Ms. Foss. Glad to hear that. Now Teresa, if you would do the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Whitmer?
I think he went to the bathroom.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Strecker?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Gentman?
Yes.
And Ms. Foss?
Abstain from voting, but thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion is unanimous. Congratulations, Ms. Foss, for being the new vice chair for next year. With that then, I'd like to nominate Teresa to be the board's secretary, Teresa Haley, for the next year. Do we have a second?
A second.
And I think that's Ms. Foss seconding. And I guess Teresa, if you would do the, or, oh, yes, Teresa, if you would do the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Whitmer?
Yes.
Ms. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. Strecker?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Gentman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. The motion is unanimous. Congratulations, Teresa. I, I won't be serving with you again next year, but I'd like to say I think you've done a wonderful job the entire time I've been on and I think you'll continue to serve the next board well.
Thank you.
Did Teresa, did Teresa accept it?
Oh, yeah.
She doesn't, I'm sorry, she doesn't have a choice. It's in her job description.
Oh, okay. Otherwise, we could give you your estate, Teresa.
For the record, I accept, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Teresa. Yeah, I believe that concludes the, the voting and moving on then, I guess, to the presentation of the Crystal Award. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. Are you all ready for some killer, and I'm using air quotes, dad jokes?
Okay.
This may be the death of me, air, death in air quotes again. We are at the point in the meeting when we would normally present the, again, air quotes, departing board members, the Crystal Award, affectionately known as the, again, air quotes, tombstone. I hope Dale and Brian are not offended that the presentation this year is not made by a muckety muck, but knowing both of them, I don't think they will be. Pandemic or not, blue jeans meeting or not, I would have asked to give both these send offs. Dale, your review of applications is always informed by the design guide. On more than one occasion, you have stated that just because you thought something may be aesthetically pleasing does not mean it necessarily meets the design guide. You have not been afraid to go to an uncomfortable place in holding applicants, other board members and staff to that standard. You have not shied from expressing your opinion even when it is contrary to the majority of the board. You have the ability to articulate what is wrong with the building's architecture and how it can be fixed. During this, a good example of this is during the courtesy review of the airport terminal, Dale observed that the building had three gables on the front and Dale observed that those three gables were given equal importance when only two were entrances and exits to the building and the third was buried behind parking. It did not make a lot of sense, but Dale was able to articulate that to the applicant. As a chairman, Dale's attention to detail has served the DRB well. For example, the order he uses to call on board members during project comments may appear random, but is actually a careful consideration of the project and the various expertise of the board members. Lately, Dale's attention to detail and his willingness to work closely with staff has been a huge part of the success. been a huge part of the success the DRB has had moving to a virtual format. Brian, the DRB is charged with commenting not only on the architecture, but also on the site design, and it is obvious that you have carefully considered this part of every application. The design guide speaks to a preference for native species, and you'll always insist on replacing invasive species like Plegustrum with suitable native alternatives. You brought your professional knowledge and experience to reviews, offering suggestions to include landscape areas and how to plant them to soften the development. You have used that knowledge to recommend modifications, to plant buffers, to help address concerns voiced by your fellow board members about the scale of proposed development. You pushed the DRB to require more than what is minimally acceptable by the, by the LMO. I don't know how many times I have heard you tell an applicant they need to plant a tree that looks like a tree when it's planted. Both Dale and Brian's tenure on the DRB has not only been leadership among board members, but of staff as well. You have a daily, both of you have had a daily influence on staff's review of applications. Your efforts have left this community a better place, and you will be missed on this board. Thank you all for your dedication and service and volunteership. It's been well received. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. I, I, I have to say, I think the airport gables might have been misattributed to me. I think Mr. Gentman actually probably made more of the point initially, but hopefully I have made other suggestions or contributions or seen things that were of concern that, that helped out as well.
I don't know, that might have been the only one, Dale.
I think what, the legacy that we'll carry on for at least next year will, from Dale, will most definitely be get some plants up against the building. That's, I gotta admit, when I first started the board, I was guilty of not focusing on that and getting, softening sides of the building will be something that I will tell you that we will carry on next year.
Well, thank you.
And, 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 of course, you're more than that, but that's one that will stick for a while. And, and Brian, I always thought was a great crossover. He could comment on the architecture as well as the landscape, and that was, you know, I, I've worked with Brian a long time outside of the board and, and, you know, and I just met Dale on the board, but both very talented individuals who could, could, you know, could talk landscape and, and architecture, and it's, it was, you know, I'll speak for myself here, and everybody else have a minute to say their goodbyes, but I enjoyed it, and you guys are great, and I'll definitely keep seeing you, that's for sure. Enjoy your freedom.
There'd be spree times, we don't, won't know what to do with suddenly.
More filtering in place, I guess.
I would like to say that, Chris, you did a good job, and I agree with everything that Michael said. You guys are gonna be missed a lot.
I'll agree with that as well. My short term on the board was overlap with you two. Learned a lot. I appreciate y'all and, and everything that you've done.
Dale, this is Debbie. You'll get to see me since we've got a couple of projects going on together, so I don't think I need to say goodbye, but look forward to continuing working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I thank you, everyone, for all that. I, I feel comfortable with the board members that are still on the board, and I don't know the new ones that yet coming on, but I'm confident that you'll continue to run a good DRB, so I feel comfortable leaving. Thank you.
Yeah, for what it's worth, I, I just wanted to thank you both, too, as a new guy here. You opened my eyes to, to what it means to be a DRB member, and, and hopefully, I'll be able to, to continue and, and fall in to the, to the high standards that you guys have set, but I really appreciate to listen to all your comments, and it helps me understand what, what my role here is. So, thank you both very much.
Thank you. Anything else from staff?
I'm sorry, we have muted ourselves. No, nothing else from staff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Brian. Thanks, well, honestly, thanks, everybody, for all your volunteership.
Sorry, this is Debbie. I wanted to touch base on something real quickly. When I was down looking at Circle K, I went around behind where's the other building that has rollers on the one end that we looked at about a year ago? Y'all remember that? And we asked them to do some landscape planning and some other cleanup around the building. I didn't see that any of that was done.
Ms. Remke, I'm happy to look into that. I'm not aware of that, but I'll, we'll go back and we'll look and make sure that all the landscaping that you had requested has been installed at rollers. Not a problem.
It's, it's around the whole building, not just in front of rollers, but around the back, there are some steps, and I forgot what was supposed to go in there. But anyway, yeah, if we could just take another look at that and see that they've complied with what we asked, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. I will report back to you at the next DRB meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Anything else before we adjourn? Moving adjourned, thank you, and.